Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mr. President. I think we're in the middle of a meeting.
I think we're in the middle of a meeting. I got full on.
Rochester Board of Education Meeting is hereby convened. Would everyone please stand so that we can have a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance to the flag will be led by Commissioner Tom Brennan.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
board meetings. The first item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held August 17, August 23, and August 31, 2006.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and second. Are any corrections to the minutes? There have been none, and everyone who is in agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
The next item will be speakers addressing agenda items. Since we have none, we will then move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the first day that we have met since the opening of school more than a week and a half ago, a couple of weeks ago. And I'm pleased to tell you that we had a very smooth opening. There are lots of new things that we were able to put in place this year to help make that opening very smooth. One is a major investment that we've been making in technology has enabled us to implement what a new student information system, also known as the Chancery Student Management System. And I can't underscore how much it took to put that in place, making certain that the technology itself was meeting the standards that was necessary for people in their buildings to be able to record attendance online, making certain that there was working computer stations at every single desk for every single teacher, making certain that people were trained. It was quite an undertaking, and I can't thank the staff from our IT unit who did such a terrific job with that, more than 3,000 teachers trained. The other thing that it allowed us to do, I remember years ago when too often I'd go to school, especially high schools, on opening day, and I'd be very disappointed to go into certain schools and see so many students in an auditorium waiting to be scheduled. Sometimes you'd see, you know, more than 100 students. For the first time this year, we were able to have just about all of our schools, with the exception of a couple where there were more students than we hoped had not been scheduled, but for the most part, schedules were done, completed, distributed to students before the start of school, and it really was, I think, a terrific feat. Obviously, we want to make certain that all schools are meeting the same kind of standard that the 16 of our 19 high schools were able to achieve. Transportation Department, just to speak to some of the issues there and with how technology has helped us, in the first week of school and in the week preceding the start of school, they had over 3,800 calls, and because of the technology that we now have in place, they were able to resolve transportation issues right on the spot with over 2,000 requests being met. We had over 1,900 new students registered, and 321 students requested transfers, and all students with completed registrations were placed immediately. I'd like to also talk about, this has been almost a key issue for us for many years, at least in the three years, every year the issue of textbooks comes up. And I am pleased to report that in this past budget round this year, in a timely way, we purchased enough textbooks in core areas for every student to be issued their own textbooks. Ample textbooks were also purchased centrally for every student. All school principals were informed that it is the policy of the board that every student be issued their own textbook in core subject areas. Schools have a textbook information hotline number. We are going to be making that available to parents so that if anyone does have a question about a textbook for their child, that parents can actually know what number to call, and we can access that. And of course, we now have staff working under the supervision of the librarian who manage the textbook rooms. And last, textbooks are given to students to keep and take home, and they are checked out regularly using their ID card, so we can actually track that. I'd like to talk about another development. We have seen, over the past several years, gains in elementary performance on New York State standardized tests. In 2002, we had roughly 45% of our students meeting standards in math in grade four. That went to 50-some-odd percent, to 68%, to 73% of our students meeting standards at grade four in math. We've seen gains in English Language Arts continually improve over the last four years. We have also seen gains in social studies on the grade-five state assessment, 51% meeting standards to 61% in '03-'04, to 68% to 80% of our students at grade five meeting standards. Same thing in science. We've been very proud of our performance at the elementary level, but we've known that we've been very disappointed with some of the progress at the high school level. And so, I'm really pleased tonight to report that when the assessment results for our grade-eight testing for ELA was released by the state, that Rochester demonstrated some of the greatest improvement of the Big Five in the entire state of New York. In fact, it took us a few years, but we have surpassed the performance in Syracuse and Buffalo, and with greater attention and focus, I'm certain that we can surpass the performance of New York City and Yonkers. Our performance across the board for grade-eight students in ELA reflected a 9% increase. Very pleased with excellent progress at School of the Arts, a 9% increase; Freddie Thomas Learning Center, a 21% increase in performance in terms of students meeting standards; John Marshall had a 19-point gain in achievement; the former Madison, which became Wilson, also a 19-point gain; and progress at Jefferson, Charlotte, and the International School of Finance. In fact, the state reported that all of our high schools met school-wide performance targets for grades nine through 12. So, we're very pleased with this demonstration of progress. We also acknowledge it is only the beginning, but I think it's important that we recognize the work of our staff in that regard. Going back to the opening week, we had, in that first day, as you know, we made a big decision during the budget process that we were going to have a number of schools change their start time at the high school level. We looked at students and some of the research on biological functioning and making certain that our young people had sleep, and we changed the start time in a number of schools from 7:30 to 8:30. We also took another step. We transitioned from the yellow school buses in a number of our high schools to using RTS transportation. And it was interesting, as you know, the RTS buses, they have bigger seats, they're air-conditioned, they're also accessible to students in the morning. So if you miss either in the morning or after-school bus, you can always catch the next one instead of turning around and have to go home, and they can use their passes throughout the day for that. It was a really good move, and one that we're very pleased about. RTS has just been terrific for us, and of course, the bottom line, to make it better for students, student achievement. Well, that morning, we had a number of volunteers from Central Office who actually rode on the bus, on the RTS buses. They received their red jackets, they went out and actually rode with the RTS bus drivers, and I believe, at this point, we have a brief presentation to share for you. Or we want to ask those people to stand. In terms of the volunteers, we'd like to recognize you for your support. Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. We've received so much good feedback about that that I think we will do that every year. Thank you. That is my report.
Before I ask the commissioners if they have any questions, I'd like to recognize that we have a new student representative joining us today. His name is Maurice Evans, and he will be reporting to you later. Are there any questions for Dr. Rivera?
Yes, President Garcia. While, you know, it is good that we have an increase in our test scores, I guess I'd like you to respond to this whole notion that teachers are teaching to the test and that teachers feel compelled to teach to the test. And there has been some issues brought to my attention that there are teachers who are helping students with the test and that they are fudging the numbers. Can you respond to that?
Well...
President Garcia.
I don't know. Let me simply say that we work very carefully with all of our staff to make certain that we're not teaching to the test. What is more important is that children, and young adults, adolescents, understand the content, and that is first and foremost, and we reinforce that with all of our staff. I would be remiss, however, if I didn't also share with you that there are some basic, essential test-taking skills and understanding how test formats are set up and what are some of the expectations associated with how to take a test. So it's not teaching to the test, but really understanding how some of these tests are set up and how they're organized, et cetera. And that's what we also work very carefully to do, not to teach to the test. That is something that we definitely do not want to be associated with.
Is there a monitoring mechanism in place that will ensure that we are doing our due diligence in terms of test-taking?
Well, of course, there are administrators in schools and people who supervise staff who observe and go from class to class. Especially, there are proctors. There are actual proctors who are required, you know, to supervise some of these assessments when they're being administered. So some of those things are in place.
Any other questions for Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan.
Since there's an obvious distinction between assistance with test-taking skills and fudging numbers, can we be clear that if anyone is caught doing that, which is essentially cheating, the consequences would be very severe, I would hope?
Oh, absolutely. You're talking about dismissal? You can be talking about an entire school having their scores not be recognized in a district...
We don't power it.
That is a very, very serious offense, which we do not tolerate at all.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If I may, President Garcia.
Commissioner Henley.
The State Department of Education didn't rely so much on the test as being the end-all-be-all. We wouldn't have to worry about any teachers teaching to the test. That's all I got to say.
I have another question, President Garcia.
Excuse me a second. Commissioner Henley, I'm sorry, but I didn't understand your statement.
It's just my two cents worth saying that the state shouldn't be demanding so much of the tests as being the end-all-be-all, and we don't have to worry about any teacher teaching to a test.
Oh, fine. Okay. Commissioner Elliott.
We got, Dr. Rivera, in your weekly report, Part Two, are you going to refer to this in terms of the diversity issue? Are you going to speak to this?
No, I had not this evening.
Any reason why you would not speak to this issue?
I'm trying to follow where you are right now.
I've got it right here. Would you pass that?
Oh, this was information that I simply provided to the board, is also sent on September 1, and simply provide information on staffing and some of our ratios, and it's just basic information that I gave to the board a few weeks ago on our efforts with our diversity initiative, as well as the appointment of administrators and teachers.
Fine. Dr. Rivera stated that he completed his report, and we're just going to leave it there. Any other questions?
I just have one.
Commissioner Evans.
Do you anticipate, with being, it's been successful with staggering the start times, of maybe adding more schools next year for the later start?
That's a good question. It's one that I think we initially talked about, but we haven't really come back together again to assess where we are, but I think it's certainly something that we will look at. I know that, you know, we do have the prerogative as management to set those times, but we also want to be respectful, and we want to involve schools in that process as well. So that is something that we will pursue. Thanks.
There have been no more questions, then we'll move on to board reports, and we're going to ask the student representative, Mr. Evans, to please give us your report.
Yesterday, we held our first meeting as a student leadership congress. We decided that this year, we'll be partnering with a local elementary school of sixth graders for the kind of Big Brothers, Big Sisters mentoring program. Also, this year, we are pairing up with the Department of Food Services as an advisory group for school meals. We're going to be doing bullying prevention, public service announcements, and commercials on the district's TV news show, Students First. Along with Saturday, November 4, we will be helping out at pre-K at College Program at St. John Fisher. Our major goal this year is to recruit more members and to get more involved in the community. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any questions of Mr. Evans?
Mr. Andrews, are your advisors the same as the year's last, and could you introduce them for the audience?
Yes, our advisors are Barbara Jarzynicki and Tom Petronio, and Nicole Crocker. My apologies.
Commissioner Thompson.
One of your goals is to increase membership. How many members do you have, or at least all of the schools already represented?
Currently, we have five to six members. Right now, only Charlotte and Wilson are represented.
Any other questions for Mr. Evans? Then we'll move on to quality assurance. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Garcia. Regarding the Human Resources and Culture Change Initiative, the Quality Assurance Committee met on Monday, September 18, and we revisited the Human Resources Culture Change Report that was recommended by QA and approved by the full board in December 2005. While some information has been reported to the board, our committee needs to know the overall status of progress on this work. There is a recommendation approved by the committee to have the superintendent do the following: provide QA with the most current update on this data request; identify the barriers to timely reporting and how they'll be addressed; present a timeline for when the information can be expected, and make the data part of his quarterly report. The superintendent and I met earlier today and discussed this, and so I note that he has some plans that he intends to move forward with his administration, but since this recommendation did come out of the QA committee, I am asking for a motion to that effect, that those four items I just listed be supported by the full board. So I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
I second it.
Okay. It's been properly moved and second. Any discussions? I would like to ask the superintendent to please respond.
Certainly. There was a couple of issues, one involving the JROTC assessment of curriculum and... There was a couple of issues, one involving the JROTC assessment of curriculum, and we believe, in fact, that we can accomplish that in an earlier timeframe, and there's no reason why we can't complete that curriculum review by March 1 and be able to report back to the board on a timely basis. That was one issue. I think the second item is that I wanted to convene my staff from HR and one other department, and, along with board staff, review in greater detail the two-page set of questions, and then report back on which ones we believed we could respond to in a timely way, which ones might require additional time, and then, third, which ones might be difficult to complete at this time. And I'm happy to convene that meeting and go through that two-page document and report back on that.
President Garcia, I have a question.
Commissioner Elliott?
One of the concerns that I had of the whole report was, is that it was approved in December, and these are issues of diversity that Commissioner Thompson had and the board had put forth to the district to respond to. It was given in December, we're talking about September. We have serious issues of diversity in this district. We were just at a meeting Tuesday night. And you've heard this before. I also have a report that you, that the district even commissioned the diversity initiative. So we know that we have an issue, and for the district to sit on this since December and nothing to be done on is just unacceptable, in my opinion.
I need to clarify, we have not sat on this issue. We have taken steps in a number of areas in terms of implementation aspects of that report, having formulated a committee addressing issues of professional development, having taken a myriad of other steps to address that. Secondly, what we indicated is that in that two-page set of questions, that we would, in fact, report as we implemented some of these initiatives on some of those issues. So I want to be very clear, and for the record, state that that has not been ignored, and in fact, on the contrary, we have taken several steps in that regard.
And let me, if I may, President Garcia, since this is still in my report, try to reiterate that...
Go ahead. Well, no, your report, we're on the, on the motion, not on your report. On the motion, Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, as part of the discussion on the motion...
Yes.
I wanted to reiterate that part of my comments included the fact that some information has been reported on. However, there is this need for us to get a status check on where we stand with all of the items, and that's the plan that I hear coming from the superintendent.
Commissioner Power?
I have a procedural concern that, just as we are required 48 hours' notice of superintendent's request for action or motion, that we, as a board, were not presented with written information about this motion prior to the board meeting.
I agree that there's a procedural issue here, which is, this is not the way that we normally deal with requests for information. The committee makes the request. If the committee does not receive the information it requires, then the committee comes to the board, and we instruct the superintendent to provide the information to the committee so that they can proceed with their work. We are skipping a step here, so I agree with Commissioner Power that we are not following our own procedures here.
Point of clarification, are you saying that it is unnecessary, therefore, for QA to make this request of the full board because the directive was given at the QA committee meeting?
What, I'm not understanding, what directive was given at the full QA committee meeting?
That the superintendent provide QA with the most current update on the data request, that he identify the barriers to more timely reporting, how they'll be addressed, that he present a timeline for when the information can be expected, and make the data part of his quarterly report.
Here, here's what I would like to do. I'm going to, I'm going to call the question on this issue. However, I'm going to remind the board members that an approval of this is somewhat a violation of our procedures, and I'm going to request, if this motion doesn't go forth, I'm going to recommend that the committee sends an information request to the superintendent and allow him to properly respond, like we usually do.
Point of clarification?
Clarification, Commissioner Thompson?
If I understood you correctly earlier, it's, the committee makes the request of this, makes, presents the directive to the superintendent, and if it is not met, then we bring it to the full board. So that's why I understood you to say that this motion is not necessary, because the committee has said in its meeting of September 18 that this is what we're looking to receive.
Do you, my question is, they used to make this request of information to the superintendent?
At the, at the Quality Assurance Committee meeting, it was, yes, it was stipulated that this is what we want. Do you mean that I present, or did we have a memo presented to the superintendent?
Requesting the information, yes.
Only through his staff that were present at the QA meeting.
Yeah, but, I think that we don't need to belabor the discussion, but, being that this is an item from a previous piece of legislation, resolution that has already passed the board, basically, I mean, we're just asking, we can take a motion from the floor anytime when, we're not, because we're just, we're just asking for regular information. I mean, this isn't something that's, that technical in nature, it's just a regular motion.
We've taken the motion, and we are discussing the motion, and now we, unless there is further discussion, we're going to be voting on it.
Right.
What...
Commissioner Brennan?
I'm sorry, I'll be really brief here. What would be the consequences of us not acting?
The consequence would be that the committee will present the information in a memo form to the superintendent for his response.
Because I think it's just important that we pay attention to procedures and process, because in this instance, the consequences might not be overwhelming, but if we get into the habit of not paying attention to that, some other time it could be.
Thank you. Commissioner Power?
My concern is that when you're asking the full board, when the committee is asking the full board to endorse an action, we need to have seen the paper trail in the same way as any other resolution. We need to know who, what, why, when, and where, and it seems to me that the opportunity existed for us to receive a memo about this prior to tonight. That would have been the appropriate approach to taking this beyond the purview of a committee and enforce full board endorsement of that action.
Well, I mean, maybe I just, maybe I just think that we're making this a little bit too difficult. I mean, first off, the superintendent has already agreed to, has agreed to provide these things, so basically, this is just a technicality for us to say, yes, we...
Correction here, Commissioner Evans. He hasn't agreed to provide the things. He says that he will take a look to see which ones he can respond to immediately, which ones would require additional research, and which one he will have to respond to at a later time, or may not be able to respond at all in these times.
Right.
President Garcia?
I'm going, yeah, Commissioner Thompson, and then we're just going to go ahead and vote.
Well, my thinking is that it might make sense to have Commissioner Elliott withdraw the motion, because it appears that the only thing QA may need to do, if in fact it's necessary, is follow up its verbal directive that came out of the meeting on the 18th with a written memo to the superintendent. And if that's all that's necessary, then I certainly would be satisfied with that, and would recommend that the motion to get the full support of the board be withdrawn.
I made the motion, so...
Do you withdraw the motion, Commissioner Evans?
If Commissioner Thompson feels that way, it's her item. If you feel that way, I withdraw it.
Yes or no? Yes. And you accept the withdrawal, Commissioner Thompson?
I do.
Thank you. We'll move on then to...
To the rest of my report.
The rest of your report. Yes, thank you.
Perhaps it'll be much shorter. A community forum on graduation. As I reported to the board at the August business meeting, our Community and Intergovernmental Relations Chairman, Malik Evans, and I are collaborating with the superintendent on a community forum on graduation. We would like, we hope to shortly begin planning this important event, which will be designed to look at best practices nationally and locally related to graduation, what efforts are currently underway by the district and community organizations, and how impediments and other challenges can be overcome by working together. This initiative was discussed at QA again on Monday evening, and I'm asking for a motion of support from the full board as an individual commissioner and on behalf of Commissioner Chairman Evans. We're aiming for a January 2007 event.
So moved.
Second.
I have a, just want to make a statement in reference to it, if that's in line.
It's been moved and seconded, and under discussion, Commissioner Elliott, you are within your rights to make a statement.
Thank you, President Garcia. The, in the QA meeting, it was presented with Commissioner Thompson and myself, and I just want to make it clear in terms of why I did not move it out of committee. First of all, I didn't feel that I had enough information at the time to support it, but secondly, one of the things that I have heard that I'm not satisfied with with some of my colleagues on the board, is that there is this blame for the community, and not for the community not, seemingly, they're not doing their part. And one of the things I'm real clear on is that the community, or nonprofits in the community, are doing what they can do to the capacity by which they can do it. Here, I'm not sure that we're doing it to the capacity that we're doing it. Those organizations within the community, as an example, only have so many dollars to work with. Here in the district, we have over $600 million, and I didn't want there to be this kind of discussion that the community is at fault, or the community needs to do more, when I'm out there in the community and the community is doing to capacity what they can do. Again, I'm not sure, so I wanted to make sure that when we do this forum, that this was not a bashing of the community.
When, when, when a committee cannot get an item out of the committee because either there's no quorum, or the vote is even, they're within their rights to bring the discussion to the full board, which Commissioner Thompson is now doing. So therefore, we are within our rights to vote on this issue. Commissioner Thompson?
Again, I thank Commissioner Elliott for the concerns that she has raised, and have given my assurances that my intent is not that this be a finger-pointing exercise.
Excuse me, Commissioner Thompson, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but please address your remarks to the question on the table, which is for or against the motion that we are discussing.
The reason I am for the motion we're discussing is because I think this can be an information-sharing opportunity for everyone to become better informed about what efforts are currently underway, and to, as I said, talk about the challenges and the opportunities moving forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
And I would just say that the thinking around this forum is, number one, it could be, number one, a learning experience for the district to find out what is working, and definitely to be collaborative. I mean, we all understand that nonprofit organizations are stretched. This is definitely not, at all, in any way, shape, or form, going to be used to, by any way, place blame on the community. We're all a part of the community, so by doing that, we place some blame on ourselves. So this is, this is really meant to be a collaborative effort, and to see how we can look at getting the community more involved in their schools, and also what the school district should be doing to help, the other things the school district could be doing to help our students. So that's the purpose of the forum.
Fine. Thank you. We're going to start with, I'm going to have a roll call vote on this motion, and we'll start at my right with the student representative.
Aye.
Yes or no?
He said aye.
Aye. Commissioner Thompson?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Power?
Public forums are always a good idea. I say aye.
Commissioner Elliott?
Amen.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Henley?
Aye.
Commissioner Elliott?
I vote in favor of it, with the notion that we're not attacking the community.
Oh, absolutely.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
And I vote aye, I have it eight to zero. We're now going to continue with our reports. The Finance Committee...
I'm nearing conclusion.
Oh, you still got something? Okay, fine, go ahead.
Finally, regarding JROTC, in June, the board approved a one-year motion of support for the JROTC program, with the stipulation that the superintendent review the curriculum, make sure that no recruiting or weapons training is taking place, and report back to the board. QA has communicated to the administration its interest in fast-tracking the report, and this touches on what Dr. Rivera said earlier, and asked by when, prior to the initial June 2007 date that was offered, a report can be completed. And in my discussion just today with Dr. Rivera, he has said that it will be possible to receive that information by April 1st, but I am still obligated to report that out of our committee meeting, we had communicated the interest in fast-tracking this, and that's currently underway.
Fine, thank you.
Our next meeting is Monday, October 16, and as usual, board colleagues and members of the public are more than welcome to attend. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I should have waited for those words before I continued, right? Commissioner Power?
The Finance Committee met on Thursday, September 14, reviewed and recommend-for-approval resolutions 228 through 231, and Resolution 246. These resolutions reflect a contract for L.A. software, Alloy Software, OptNet Technologies, Business Intelligence 101, or NetPro, and Chancery Student Management Resolutions. Resolution 246 is SWBR Architects to advance the facilities modernization plan to the next step. These were all recommended by the Finance Committee. We also have a couple of action items coming out of it. Ford Green agreed to provide some information about the annual cost of the Chancery Student Management System, the maintenance cost, that information has been provided, and he has agreed to work with our staff to coordinate another technology breakfast seminar for board members who are interested in becoming familiar with the technologies and initiatives that are being presented through the Finance Committee for approval, and how they work, and what we can do with those technologies. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 10, at 5:30 PM. On that agenda, we have plans to discuss the amended budget for 2006/07, financial review of reports, additional resolutions, and a topic on New York State Public Law, MWBE. This particular law presentation will address recently-proposed legislation to raise local government bidding limits to $20,000 for commodities, and $50,000 for public work projects. That, in a nutshell, is what we'll be discussing next, at our next meeting. We do not have monthly reports at this time, because we will, next month, we will have our year-end reports.
When is your next meeting?
October 10, 5:30.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans, you have two reports.
I have two reports. First, from the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, met on September 13 to discuss and receive an update on the facilities modernization plan. We learned that public information sessions for the facilities modernization program are scheduled for October 16, 23, and 30 at 6:00 PM. So what I... So I would ask all my colleagues to try to keep those evenings clear of committee meetings. On October 16th, it will be in the northeast zone of the city at Freddie Thomas High School. On the 23rd of October, the northwest zone of the city at Jefferson High School. And on October 30th, the south zone of the city at Nathaniel Rochester Community School. We have a second draft of our proposed 2007 legislative agenda. It's on the agenda tonight for discussion under new business and was also provided in your Friday packet. If you did not bring it along with you, it's at your seat. I'd like to see the board adopt our legislative agenda at our October meeting. And I would just remind everyone here that this is just a working draft. So we still have a little bit over a month to put our finishing touches on it. That concludes my, our next meeting will be for the CIGR committee meeting, October 10th at 6:30 PM. And among the things on your agenda will be an update from the PPC Parent Partnership Council. Second item on the agenda is brief. We had an Audit Committee meeting. We met in executive session last night to meet with our external auditors. Also, at your seat, you have a request for Resolution 257, a request to extend our contract with Hoskin Russ Attorneys LLC. This is, this resolution is important because it is, it provides legal services for the Board of Education exclusively. And we'll take that under the regular resolutions. And that concludes my report on the Audit Committee.
And thank you. You said that under new business, we're going to be discussing the legislative agenda.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Henley?
I have a question of Commissioner.
Excuse me a second, Commissioner. Let's back up. What is your question, Commissioner Elliott?
What, I'm just getting this in terms of legal services exclusively for the board. What does this entail? Why is it that we are entering into a contract with this firm?
We've been using Hoskin Russ mainly for the transition of reporting of the internal audit department to the Board of Education, which had to take place by law due to the controllers legislation that was passed last year. So Hoskin Russ is providing, has been providing us legal opinions on what we can and cannot do. So that's the purpose of that contract with them. And it's not a per diem, but a per hour, billable hours contract.
How many hours do we normally use them or is that?
Not much. It all depends on the issue or whatever it is we're doing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henley?
Governance Committee of the whole met on Thursday, August 31st to talk about a personnel issue. I want to thank Mrs. Dunsmore and Mrs. Lee for their assistance with that. Our next meeting is on September 26th at 5:30.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. Record time.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Brennan.
For the Policy Committee, there's no report, and the next meeting is to be determined. And my predecessor in this position, Rob Brown, is smiling down upon us for the infrequency with which we're meeting. Now, the issues that we were going to be discussing have not reached the stage proceeding from the staff level where it would make sense for the committee to meet on those issues. But we will soon.
Thank you. I'll find some ways to give you some work. We are going then, we're going to move on to our resolutions. And the first group of resolutions are the Human Resources Resolutions, Resolution Number 171 through 223. Resolutions Number 1 to 223. I'll entertain a motion to approve those resolutions, please. Is, a second?
Second.
It's been moved, properly moved and seconded. Linda, you determine who did what.
I just wanted to...
Under discussion, Commissioner Elliott?
I just wanted to note that I actually just received the packet a few minutes ago. I didn't get it in my packet. So I just want you all to be aware that I will have questions, a lot of questions.
Very interesting. Let's proceed with the resolutions. It's been moved and seconded. Only favorable of resolutions 171 to 223, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Point of order.
Point of order?
We're discussing a motion. Doesn't she have the opportunity or have I got this mixed up to ask questions?
Not on resolutions dealing with personnel matters, Commissioner Brennan.
Thank you. Just want to be clear.
Let me, let me get that clear again because as we know, all of this stuff gets on our website. So it can't be that confidential if all of the resolutions appear on our website.
Commissioner Elliott, we're dealing with the law here. The law doesn't permit us to discuss personnel matters in public. That's all there is to be said about that. Again...
Even in terms of just some semantic issues? I'm not talking about any personnel person per se.
If you have some questions related to something that might have been misspelled, you might make the correction if you so choose. But that's about it, Commissioner Elliott. All of those in favor of approving Resolution 171 to 223, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And I will abstain from resolutions 191 and 194 because it involves family members.
I'd like you to give me a second to go through these to make sure.
I, you will not get a second to go through those resolutions, Commissioner Elliott. You got them the same time everybody else got them.
No, I did not get it. That's why I just said to you, President Garcia.
That's your problem, Commissioner Elliott.
It's not my problem, President Garcia. I just got this packet.
Commissioner Elliott?
I just got this packet.
Commissioner Elliott?
Where's your... President Garcia?
The resolutions, the packet was delivered.
I'm telling you, I didn't get it.
That's, that's your problem, Commissioner Elliott. It was delivered. We have the people in the district who are to testify to the fact that it was delivered. We have the staff who testified to the fact that the packets were put together for you and sent to you.
I tell you. You don't have seven zero. You can't because I haven't given my vote.
Commissioner Elliott is abstaining.
You don't, that's not what I said.
Well, then you're not voting. It's the same thing, Commissioner Elliott.
No.
We'll move on.
I have an opportunity to do what I'm supposed to do.
We'll move to...
Because I'm an elected official.
We'll move to resolutions 224 through 227.
Then I make a motion to move President Garcia as president. I make the motion to move President Garcia as president.
Motion is out of order. The motion is out of order. We entertain a motion to approve resolutions 224 to 227. Allen, please.
So moved.
It's been moved. I need a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We are going to have, any questions on resolution?
This argument, this decision, that I did not vote on these resolutions.
Commissioner Elliott? Any questions on resolutions 224 through 227?
And I'd like for it to be noted that I did not vote at all, not an abstention.
Please know that Commissioner Elliott...
Wasn't given the opportunity to vote on it.
Commissioner Elliott did not vote.
By the president. He wouldn't allow me to.
All of those in favor of resolutions 224 to 227, please say aye.
Is there not discussion of these?
I asked for question on the discussions, and no one had any.
Okay, I'm sorry. My waxe.
Excuse me, point of order, President Garcia.
Yes.
We have an advisory vote by the student on these following resolutions, correct?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Commissioner Thompson. Yes, Mr. Evans, how do you vote on those resolutions?
Point of order. Is there a question on the set? Do you have a question on the set?
No, I just wanted, well, just that these are on the website, obviously, right? The non-personnel.
Yes.
Okay.
All of them are on the website. All of them.
Personnel matters?
Personnel matters as well.
Specifically? Names?
Names, all of it.
Okay. Prior to their approval?
No, no, no.
Okay. Okay. Just for clarity.
I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for your answer, Mr. Evans.
Sorry, aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Power?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Henley?
Aye.
Commissioner Elliott?
What are we voting on?
Resolutions 224 through 227.
I vote yes on 223. Yes on 224. Yes on 225. 226 and 227.
Commissioner Brennan?
Yes.
And I vote aye of resolutions have it seven, seven oh. I will provide, I'm going to take just a second to provide the superintendent with the opportunity to make some recommendations regarding the human resources.
There were a number of individuals who were appointed this evening. And I'd just like to recognize those who are here who may be in the audience with your family. We have an acting principal at Frederick Douglass, Vicky Ramos. Vicky, are you here today? Congratulations, Vicky. We have a director of ESOL, Mr. Jay Piper. Are you here, Mr. Piper? Congratulations. We have an acting principal at School 28, who was formerly the assistant principal at Nathaniel Rochester, Susan Lad. Susan? We have the acting assistant principal for operations at East High, Laney Johnson. Laney Johnson, are you here? We have an acting assistant principal at Edison, Carleen Mears. Carleen? An acting coordinator of instruction at Freddie Thomas, Mark Christman. Mark, are you here? An assistant principal at School of the Arts, Joan, Joanne Aspenleider. Joanne? Congratulations. An acting principal at Franklin, Bernadette Reagan. Bernadette, standing with her baby to my right. A new director of alternative education will be opening three, hopefully four, new alternative centers in '07. Mr. Jerome Watts. Jerome, are you here? Mr. Adam Rogers, Roger, an acting assistant principal at Edison. Are you here? And Ms. Marion Whitfield, acting assistant principal at NRCS. Congratulations. I would like to share with the board that a number of these positions are in fact acting. We have a process that we go through before those positions are filled where there's an opportunity for applications and we go through the regular process before those positions are actually filled on a permanent basis.
Thank you. I would also like to take one second to recognize our next school board commissioner, soon to be elected, Mr. Van White. Mr. White, would you stand? I know I saw you. Mr. White has no opposition, so therefore he is. We are going to move on to the next set of resolutions. These are budget and technology resolutions. It will be resolutions 228 through 231. I'll entertain a motion to approve those resolutions, please.
So moved.
Second.
We moved and seconded. Any questions related to budget and technology resolutions?
Other than note that these are just the ones that have come through the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee. All of those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye.
Point of, point of order, all student representatives.
Student representative. I'm sorry, I keep forgetting. Mr. Evans, please.
Aye.
Everyone else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions, none. Okay. Then we'll move on to the procurement and supply resolutions. That would be resolutions 232 through 234. I'll entertain a motion, please, to approve those resolutions.
So moved.
It's removed?
Second.
And seconded. Any questions related to procurement and supply resolutions? There being none, student representative Evans, are you vote?
Aye.
Everyone else, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. The resolutions 235 through 257. And Resolution 257 is the one for additional legal services. I'll entertain a motion to approve those resolutions, please.
Point of order. Just with 257, before we make that motion, if I could just get a motion to suspend the 48-hour rule for number 257.
So moved.
What's the 48-hour rule? Could you explain that?
48-hour rule is that you have to have an item 48 hours before we can act on it. However, if we do act on something after that, not within that 48-hour rule, the board has the vote to suspend that 48-hour rule.
So why is this necessary to do that? Why is it necessary to suspend the rule?
Because we need to make sure that we can start these legal services ASAP. Our next board meeting is in October.
More precisely because we're only seeing this resolution today as opposed to Tuesday, what we should have received.
That is exactly why, because we're getting it today.
And that's my, and that's my fault.
So let me then, let me then ask the people who put the motion for resolutions 235 and 257 to withdraw it for a second. Withdraw the second and the motion so that we can address the motion to suspend the 48-hour rule on Resolution 257. So there is a motion on the floor to suspend the 48-hour rule on Resolution 257. Is there a second to that resolution?
Second.
There is a second by Commissioner Brennan. Any questions? And I don't think, I don't think, this is not available, is it, Mr. Louie? Not available, thank you. There's not available. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Thank you. Then we'll move back. I'll entertain a resolution for, and motion for resolutions 235 through 257. Please.
So moved.
So moved and seconded.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, President Garcia. In reference to Resolution 239, to you, for the American Red Cross, to use city school district facilities in case of disaster situations. And the term, and this is directed to Mr. Louie. In terms of the agreement, can you speak to...
Commissioner Elliott, your questions are directed to me.
Could you respond to, well, I guess I don't know how to say it exactly because it's a legal question. What I'm, the question I'm asking is, in terms of the issue of disaster, what's the legal language that is contained for this resolution? I would imagine that the language has to be different from our normal boilerplate language when we enter into contractual arrangements with various organizations. Now, can he respond to that, President Garcia?
I'll ask the superintendent to respond to it, please.
And I'll defer to Mr. Louie.
Thank you.
In a, when a contract is authorized, and what's before you now is the question of authorization. And we go to the drafting of a contract, we'll refer to the general municipal law and some other state statutes for the applicable definitions of disasters, things that are declared by the president, by the governor, by the county executive, by the mayor. You'll have situations that, you know, a sudden flood or a sudden earthquake, then you move quickly. This resolution would allow us...
This resolution would allow us to enter a contract which was a non-financial contract, but would still leave the latitude to put in provisions about defense and indemnification, about care and security of buildings, and about adherence to rules regarding the declaration of emergencies.
Where does insurances come in to something like this in disaster situations?
Well.
I didn't hear the question, assurances or insurance?
Insurance.
Insurance.
The basic issue, the basic issue is the defense and indemnification, whether you hold us harmless for acts of your own negligence or not. It can have a provision that requires insurance. I don't know if it's typical with a Red Cross contract or not. If the board required one, then it would be there. If not, we are certainly open to discussion on it.
And President Garcia, if I may ask?
Yes.
Superintendent Rivera, in light of post 9/11, do we have an evacuation plan or some emergency plans in case of disaster?
Yes, ma'am. We have in fact updated all of our plans for crisis management evacuations. There's actually quite a bit that we've done in that area and have available for schools.
I also have a couple of other questions, President Garcia.
Go ahead.
And in reference to the resolutions that we have for Center for Dispute Settlement, excuse me, Center for Youth Services, I guess I have an issue with the amount of money that we're paying. We've got one contract for $231,000. We've got another contract here for $47,000. We've got another contract for $112,000. And we have another contract for $250,000. That just concerns me in terms of the amount of money that we're giving in with these services. Remember, my background is human services, and so it just appears that this is an awful lot of money. And I have the same issue with this, these contracts, as I did with the Inglesia contract. So I'd like to make a motion, if that's in line.
It's not in line. Motion is on the table, and you're discussing it.
All right, can I make a motion after we've completed this motion?
You can.
All right, thank you so very much. And in reference to resolution 246 with the SWBR Architects, are there African-Americans working on this project? Superintendent Rivera?
Let me, I know we have, I'd have to provide that information for you. We don't have that specific information in terms of their staffing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment that I know, I applaud Commissioner Elliott's ability to speed through, read through this section and have such thoughtful questions for a packet that she'd just seen a few minutes ago by her own words.
That doesn't require a response from me.
No, it does not.
Thank you. I will now take a vote. All those in favors of resolutions 235 through 257, please say aye.
Aye.
Student representative?
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose 241, 242, 243, 244, 245, 246. And I just need to take a minute to review these other resolutions.
Are those the only ones you oppose? 247, too?
In reference to the Rochester Children's Zone, yep. 248. 249. 250. I'll have to abstain from 251. 252. 253. 254. 256. That's it, President Garcia.
And I vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
I vote in favor of the group with the exception of resolution number 239, from which I abstain.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Power?
I'm not certain this is a case where you have to abstain, Commissioner Thompson. There's no financial gain. There's no conflict of an interest if there's no potential financial gain.
I think, Ms. Commissioner Thompson, is just going to be on the safe side.
Thank you, though.
You're welcome. So do you have the vote? Thank you. Then we'll move on. All the resolutions are done. We have no unfinished.
Point of information, now, am I able to make a res, a motion at this point?
On the new business, Commissioner Elliott. We have no, nothing for unfinished business from previous meetings, and we are now on the new business. And the first thing that I'm going to do is allow Commissioner Elliott to make whatever motion she wants to make. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Garcia.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make the motion that we have the board auditor to investigate the resolution 242, 243, 244, and 245, and to see if there are other organizations that can provide this service at a lower cost for us.
That result, that motion, Commissioner Elliott, is out of order.
Why is it out of order?
Because any request for the auditor general to investigate anything has to go to the audit committee first, before it comes to the board.
I'll make it at that committee meeting.
That's, well, you cannot go to the audit committee meeting. You can send a memo to the auditor general requesting that that item be placed on the agenda.
I can send it to the auditor general, you said?
Yes.
All right, I'll do that.
Thank you. We'll move on to the 207 legislative agenda items. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. My colleagues in front of you, you have our proposed, and again, I use the word proposed, legislative agenda for the '06-'07 school year. Many of these items are carryovers from our previous legislative agenda. And basically, the purpose of this is to give anyone, to give my colleagues an opportunity to add items that you may want to add to it and recommend that the committee look at. We will take all, any of the recommendations back, synthesize them, and have a much more lengthy discussion at the Community and Government Relations Committee meeting on October 10th, and then come back at the next board meeting with a final version that we hopefully all could live and vote on. The goal is to have this agenda completed by the end of October, number one, so we can post it on our website, and the public can know what our priorities are in terms of legislation at all levels. You also will notice on this agenda that we are focusing on every single level of government. So we have from the city, the county, the state, and also the federal government. I don't think I missed any levels, did I?
None at all.
Okay, so we have all those levels, and what items we would like to work with them on. And again, the thought is that we will be able to present this to our legislators by the end of October before Thanksgiving, hopefully before Halloween. So I guess I would like to hear from my colleagues in terms of the agenda.
Commissioner Evans, personally, I'd like you to eliminate item seven on that agenda request. Thank you.
Number seven.
Would you elaborate, President Garcia?
Item seven has to do with putting the superintendent SCG employees under civil service, and I extremely object to that motion.
Any other discussion for the committee?
Well, let's ask, why was it necessary? What was your, what was the committee's thinking in reference to number seven?
Well, I think, I think a lot of it dealt with more so streamlining things in terms of civil service. But again, it was more so added on, more so as just a discussion item to get the board's, the board's reaction from that. So we're not wedded to it by any way, but it was more so to get folks' discussion. Currently, folks in the SCG group are not classified under civil service. So, you know, it's more so to get you guys' reaction to it. Also, with our first shot at legislative agenda, a lot of this also, too, is wish lists, wish list items. Last year, we were able to get a lot of the things accomplished that we wanted to. For example, I think every year from here into the year 3000, we're always having increased funding for our universal and pre-K programs because we know that they work so well. So, but number seven is an example of something that we want you guys' reaction.
Commissioner Power?
Commissioner Elliott, I'm sorry, Commissioner Evans, this, these are not prioritized in any way.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely not. These are not priorities. And in fact, they're all number one. They're all top priorities. I see them all as important. The only, the only way that they're broken by, broken down by is by level of government. I will say, and I don't know if I should, I will say this. I will say that they are broken down by the entities that do give us the most financing. Obviously, the state, City of Rochester, the federal government, County of Monroe's at the bottom. We don't know what we can give for them, but we wanted to at least include them in under any of the discussions that we have.
How would the committee organize its work, whatever seems to be able to make progress at any given time, or, I mean, how?
Can you say that?
As usual, only you and your committee could accomplish as many goals as is laid out.
Right.
I said that last year when you laid out your priorities and, and you did work wonders, but how does a committee tackle this many tasks except to see, is to poke at it?
Right.
See which gives first.
Yeah, I think we will definitely poke to see what's going first, but obviously, a few of them rise to the top year after year. For example, the obtaining statutory authority for the facilities modernization program will be a major push this year. We really need to get that legislation passed. I would love to have it pass the first quarter of the year. I don't know if that's possible, but we'll have, we'll have a new governor, we'll have a new state legislator. So I'm hoping that that can be passed, you know, the first quarter of the year. Always trying to look for pre-K funding. I think that some of the things kind of raise, rise to the top. Exempting school districts from court filing fees, that's one of the ones that are a wish list. Not saying that we won't work for that. And Mr. Louie, I know that's a big one. That's something that he supports, but, but that's one that we would like to have, but we definitely won't ask for that before we ask for the obtaining statutory authority for facilities modernization program. So it is bold and ambitious, but I think that if we're going to be creative, we have to do that. Also, the increasing the district's school year calendar day from 180 to 200 days. That is very, I mean, that's very ambitious. We're asking for an extra 20 days, and the question is, where are the money going to come from? What does that mean? What does that look like? But it's something that, that we committed to. I mean, I believe that kids should go to school year round. So, you know, so a lot of the things are ambitious, but I think that we will, we will, not prioritize by number, but try to go after the big pieces first.
As usual, I'd like to commend Commissioner Evans for his ambitious agenda and also for his accomplishments, because last year, he had an equally ambitious agenda, and he did a fairly good job in getting those things done. So my commendations to you, Commissioner Evans.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the legislative agenda? There'll be none, then that concludes.
I have one, one other issue I'd like to discuss, President Garcia.
Excuse me a second. That concludes the official meeting of the board, and we will take one second pause, and then we can go ahead.
I just want to say to my colleagues, I know I've come across strong, and I know that I have a lot of questions.
On the facts before us, the issues at hand, and remove some of the personal piece from our remarks.
Commissioner Power?
The facts before us are that resolutions 228 through 231 and resolution 246 were recommended by the Finance Committee. So when our colleague votes no on these, they're casting aspersions on the judgment of the Finance Committee and our due diligence, not the due diligence of the district. So it's clear what the intent is.
Commissioner Evans?
You know, as I always said, when I ran for the board, being the youngest, being the youngest one, they said, you know, how would you deal with your colleagues and, you know, different personalities? And, you know, I always say that I'm so busy working on the business of improving the lives of the young people in this community that I don't have time for personal attacks or any of those other things. I'm just, just too busy. And I think that if we all stay busy and focused on that, we will do that. Because I always say, you don't have to like your colleague, you don't have to go take him to dinner and hold their hand and sing kumbaya. But as long as you can find issues that you agree on and agree to work on, we'll all be fine and be able to move the district forward in a positive way. Thank you.
Commissioner Henley?
I applaud the diverse voices on this board. I've known Commissioner Elliott for almost a year now. When we ran, I believe that if you looked up the word passionate in the dictionary, you'd see her face. She's, she definitely has a strong voice, and there's nothing wrong with that. I just, I'd like to know what happened to your resolution packet. That's, to me, very interesting.
It could have just been a mistake.
Let's drop the resolution packet issue. Commissioner Brennan?
Well, about the resolution packet issue, no. What I, I think all of us, including Commissioner Elliott and all of, and everybody at this table, and probably, probably most of the people in this room are passionate in our concern for the well-being of the children of this district and for the well-being of this community. When you get a group like this together, sometimes nobody has to send out to room service for extra ego or extra perhaps sensitivity to criticism, and I think that applies to everybody here. We would all do well to try to rein that in. It is, it is a two-way street. I am really of two minds about the issue of, that was before us tonight, that I think speaks to what Cynthia was mentioning. And that is that, on the one hand, it's extremely serious, obviously, if information that all of the board is supposed to get does not arrive to the board members in a timely way. What I think makes some of us concerned, the first question that occurred to me was first, how usual was this? Was this an isolated incident? Was it an honest mistake? And if it was that, what prevented anybody from going into the, and this is what I would have done on the occasions that I have not gotten information when I have expected it, from going into central office and saying, you know, I'd like to have this information. The meeting is Thursday. The meeting is Thursday. The information arrives to the board on Friday. You know on Friday, you haven't gotten the packet for whatever reason. You know, I think that, and I think if, to have it raised here in a way that seems to cast aspersions on the staff and perhaps on others, I think would result in your colleagues getting their backup, because in that instance, it's our integrity that's questioned. And so perhaps this is a teachable moment here, but I would hope that we would all, in the future, perhaps, try a little more to understand one another's humanity and good intentions, and recognize that civility is a two-way street. And I think we would do much better if we all devoted ourselves to that in the future.
Thank you.
Just a point. I'd like to respond to that.
One shot only, Commissioner Elliott. I said that in the beginning.
I know, President Garcia, but I just want, I'm not blaming the staff. I just want that to be said. That's not my intention to blame. I'm not blaming staff. That's all I want to say.
Understood.
Speakers on agenda items. We have a number of speakers. The rules are simple. You have three minutes to make your case. We ask you to please respect the time of others. By concluding, when the bell rings, I will, I will remind you, if you go on, that your time has expired, and we would like for you to promptly conclude and take your seat. We will not respond to any questions that the speaker would ask us. If you have something that you want us to respond to, just put it in writing, and you will get a response at a later time. The first speaker, and I'm going to get the first.